At least I.
Yeah.
At zero days.
You brought up.
Zero percent.
One percent.
That'd be fair.
Having come.
In fact, kind of.
They do stuff like that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
That is.
Those are red marks on there.
My dollars.
My dollars were special. They were dollar when I bought them. Now they're dollar quarter.
That's the worst. I have special.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I don't put it on, it just reads like a failed license plate or something. I can't read it. It's nothing close to it. I got those on.
Yeah, I have. Mine's the fourth through eighth. Yep.
Let me hear who it is. Mr. Linus.
So just so.
You might also.
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
Not this.
And what we.
What will we do?
We'll assign things.
Yes.
Well, please.
Probably left. Well, it's not from this.
The distance after.
Oh, it's.
Right.
A player.
Thank you.
I like.
My career.
I was saying.
And lots of people going down with their houses and hair. Less than a mile away from here. Some of the people aren't finding wells right now. You know, I think there's no issues.
I like that report. Yeah, the hydrology. Is that a well too?
The thing that I thought was interesting is like they're all they're all trying to get. I've tried to. They're not trying to look.
Yep.
So just can we answer your questions to your satisfaction?
Are you folks coming?
Well, they're. They were doing their. Has been mine. Right. But to the extent that we can take that. Instead of continuing, so I'd be able to take it out.
Still wrapping. Of course, we'll lose by. Right. Well, yeah, you're. Almost. Like. That as well. Yeah, right. It's good. So that just most of the middle scores. It's like. Something like that.
That is that is a real. That's totally. This is a state. They can't. These gases. Whatever else. Some of them are gas.
Same. People charging the. I raise you videos if there's.
I'm gonna ask.
In fifth and sixth grader at high school. I was gonna say. I hope fifth and sixth grader like that. And parents out there that they shouldn't.
Excuse me, we're gonna call the we're gonna call our meeting to order. If everyone would please stand, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
Goodbye. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just us for all.
As a recipient of federal funds in the support of different counties' efforts to ensure non-discrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathered statistical data regarding participants in county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey. However, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI NADA. First item of first of all, I'd like to welcome Doug Baker, our new member of the. Different County Council.
Thank you, Councilman. Member Morris, it's not a privilege to be here. Look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you very much.
And I will do a job to the best of my ability serving all of different county.
Appreciate that. First order of business on our agenda tonight is redevelopment board.
I move we appoint Doug Baker to the redevelopment board. Councilman Baker.
Second.
I move we appoint Brett Fairman.
Yeah.
Citizen member.
We have a motion on the floor. For Doug Baker, so I'll have to consider that motion.
I move that we amend this motion.
We have to vote on the first motion first.
No, not.
It's open for discussion.
And my motion is that we. Also appoint Brett Fairman. And let the council. It's a council decision. Not one or two persons' decision.
Well, there'll be a vote on the on the. Motion.
What's a motion?
The motion is to put that Baker on the redevelopment board. And we have a second.
So we're gonna.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Object to the consideration.
Duly noted.
I believe that we have. Two people that are nominated for this board. And why should the council? Just appoint a council member? And not consider the second applicant?
There has been some discussion that there was benefit to having an elected official from. Uh, the bodies on redevelopment. There's been some citizen. Information regarding the desire to have that. We have a elected official who's willing to serve. We have a member on council who uh needs to serve on the board. The motion's been made for Doug Baker and seconded by Tim. For Doug Baker to be that representative on the redevelopment commission. I'd ask for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose.
No.
Let's do a roll call vote. Dan.
No.
Glenn.
No.
Dennis.
No.
Yay. Yay. Yay.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes.
So we aren't even. For our board. We're not considering any citizens. Is that correct?
That's not correct, but we have.
What happened to the two board that Mr. Carl was on?
He's on. He's on EMA.
Doug's on.
Mark's. Mark's on EMA. We did that at our January meeting.
You you nominated a guy at the last opening on redevelopment. We approved him.
Right. And I think we should. I think we should hear from the candidates.
But they're not candidates.
To know what their qualifications are. Or does somebody else make her decision?
Their appointments by this board and this board has appointed Doug Baker to redevelopment for Dearborn County Council.
Yep, it's gonna be four to three, four to three, four to three. I mean, you wanna make all the decisions, Liz? Are you gonna get in?
I'm I'm not making all the decisions. I'm.
You definitely did.
I'm one.
Mr. Gold made the motion. I second it.
We have three to three and the president broke.
And that's.
That's how it works. I know it is.
And hopefully that will not be the case in every vote that we take from here on out.
In that way so far, sure.
Next. Yeah, I disagree. I disagree as well, but next on our agenda is commissioners for EMA.
Good evening. Um, I'm here tonight to um request a stipend for um the EMS. EMA Director Jason Sullivan to be given the title of EMS Director as well. Um, if you remember uh last year, you guys passed the lit. Tax. And on the recommendation of Mr. Hanafin and his report on page ten, I believe all of you were given copies of that report. I think I emailed it to most of you. And on page ten. That he recommended, starting in twenty twenty five, an effort to move a countywide county operated EMS delivery system should be sought. The hiring or contract. Tracking of an EMS director to facilitate the smooth transition will be key to success. The report outlines the planning and logistics needed to implement such a system. And it was discussed and decided that the amount would be an additional twenty thousand dollars as a stipend. Um, and this would be prorated for this year and the wage would be fourteen six one six. Um, with the FICA perf and unemployment, it's a total of seventeen thousand four hundred and forty six dollars.
Okay, so the the base amount is twenty thousand a year.
Yes.
The Hanafin report you referred to was it given to us? We've had it prior to.
Yes.
The budget and we referred to it during budget. It was table thirty five.
Yes.
Mr. Hanafin recommended a. Full-time uh EMS director. He allocated as much as up to seventy five thousand.
For the full time. We're not at that point now to go full time.
No, I think it's good to take steps.
Yeah.
So this is before in the recommendation of the hand.
Yes, and this would become this would come out of the EMS lit month.
If this Jason.
Yes. He sure does.
He sure does. Maybe then we don't need a full-time EMA.
Well, it will be double duty in on on what he's doing already.
I think it's a good transition.
Yes. And so he has the um the knowledge and the background for it. Otherwise, if they don't do this, all the contracts, they. They get shoved my way. And I don't have the expertise to tell the EMS directors of. Of the entities what they're supposed to be doing or to monitor them or um, you know, to keep an eye on it. And I think this would be a great person to to be leading this.
So what's the situation with the bill?
With the builder right now, I honestly don't know myself. I don't know.
We're not in a position to address that to me, I believe, but I think we are in a position to address having someone to oversee the EMS. For the county, and this seems like a logical way to go. Is there a motion to approve this for? Commissioners EMA. With EMS Lit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay.
Nay.
Motion passes with a nay from. Glenn and from Dennis.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next is community corrections. Is it apparently bookkeeping type of thing? I'm sorry, building department's next. Lee, are you presenting?
Leah Bailey presenting for the building department. This is just a transfer from the part-time wages line. He wants to split it three thousand dollars into office supplies and seven thousand dollars into the weights and measures contract.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second? Thank you, Glenn.
Glenn, did you say my name?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay. Motion passes. Doing community directions.
Um, community corrections. We were notified by the Department of Correction that the fund numbers needed to change. So these are just a reduction in the old fund numbers and an additional in the new fund numbers. No additional money. We're just moving. The appropriation.
Is there a motion to approve this? Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying. Motion passes. You doing, Glenn, as well?
Prosecutor, um. At budget time, she missed a um a salary. Increase, and this is um. It would take a total of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars to get this victim advocate where she should be. For the year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Nicole.
Nicole Bailey, there's Director of Planning and Zoning. Um, the first one I have tonight is a request for additionals. Um, this would be um through the park board. Uh, and with the Stella program that Dearborn County has been designated with through the course of those. And in working with the park board, we are trying to help them. Continue to maneuver forward well with their board, also to provide some. Staff. For that board. Um, and for example, they are required to do a five-year park plan. Um, they are behind in that. Uh. My department has helped them with that to get that. Um, into the state IVNR for review, which is required for the stellar part of the program as well and for any future grants. Um, and they must make that every five years to keep in good standing with the state and federal funding. Um, we would also like to help the park board um with their approaches on um getting uh rentals. And charging for the rental spaces in the parks to help with. Um, taking in some money to make improvements at those parks to keep that updated. Um, also for any cleaning that may need to take place uh for deposits and such of that. And to be able to take those reservations and those uh those monies for that effort. Um, and to be able to provide them at their park board meetings, any paper supplies that they would need. Uh, someone from our department would attend those meetings. More likely it would be me. And then also what will uh be included in that would be through the program, reviewing the contracts. Um, helping them through the uh. Other meetings that are required for it. Um, and going through the construction phase, anything as we move forward through those projects. So. The when I was working on the five-year park. Plan for the park board, this was one of their requests to try to get a. Director or a position that would be able to help them as they are just citizen volunteers. And to be able to help them move forward with some things that they want to be able to do. Um, I see this as a stepping stone is why I've offered to try to do this for them. To see if it grows into anything or if it's something strictly for a part-time use, at least that to be able to help them out. Um, so that's what our additional is for is for some salaries, some office supplies. Um, and software just to be able to help them facilitate through the year.
Nicole, do you anticipate, is this a prorated amount for this year or will be a similar amount for future years? Or is it just?
This was a prorated. For twenty twenty. I was looking at then putting that into their budget for the following years to see how we progressed. And if things needed to, if it was working out, if things needed to go further, we would. Jump those hurdles when needed. If they needed a more part-time person to. Help them if their needs started to grow, if this was to be a success in their ventures that they're wanting to do. It's just a step to try to see where we can go um with this help for them.
And there's no administrative fees that you can take advantage of through the stellar program to allow that to cover these expenses, is there?
No.
So just money you're wanting that they want to take out of the park budget and. And and how did uh where where do they do? Where do they get their supplies at now? And how did you?
Themselves. Um, so what I did is just tried to figure out as far as even what I've done to date. Um, with sort of paper supplies, the copies out of our office and to help them with that five-year plan. Um, the emails that we've gone back and forth with IDNR, um, the phone calls and stuff like that. And it's just a uh estimate right now to try to work towards. Um, getting things up and running or accepting phone calls and accepting reservations and stuff like that.
The money that the salary supplements is that is that? You're asking the park board to to reimburse. Uh.
I was asking for additionals to be able to move forward with this on the.
So we're.
County general.
And the county general into the park board budget.
Okay, so so where the where's the where are the salary money going to?
Would be going to my staff. So in turn.
I'm bored with what they're making now.
That is correct.
How would they be working additional hours or?
So that would be as far as taken except um uh. Above, not above hours, but above eternal phone calls. So what we're anticipating is. Um, adding a separate line that is strictly for the park board that would be able to take those reservations, working with their um. Their internet or their website consultant they have to be able to either take those online or to accept those reservations. We would also be using our equipment in office to be able to take those. Monies in to be converted to their uh information, the collections that would be taken in for that, the staff that we have. Would be turning those in on a daily basis as.
What would be done during regular business hours?
That is correct.
So wouldn't that be taken away from planning and zoning for?
Well, that's with the phone calls that we get, the phone calls that are added into there. Um, but that is with uh us being a part uh member staff right now. We see it as a stumble or a starting block. If we go as the year progresses and I see that it's a. We've maybe done an outstanding job on this and that there's something else needed. Um, I want to be able to do that at the at the end of the year to be able to adjust that if there's something else that's needed. But I do think they. Absolutely need some help.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just wondering if we're gonna be able to do a good job of being planning and zoning and do the help the. The park board and we're gonna still be working a thirty-five hour week, but we're giving people raises for not not any additional time basically, other than you attending the meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So how'd you come up with the with the salary amount?
Well, it's as far as just um some time adjusted for those phone calls. Um, and uh with that and then some work that would be assisted with me and the zoning administrator. Uh, with the. Plan itself and the information that would be coming in for the Stella program as the contracts come in. Any good processes that we would have to help uh also assist those supplies for this first year. Um, and then for the um office manager and the ladies that sit at front, that would be the phone call areas. Um, I just based it on a few hours a week um through the end of the year. Um, and it may be more than that. I I under. Did it, but I didn't want to overdo it because I think it's gonna take some time to work out the kinks and getting the public aware of the information and the process for setting this up.
Though though your proposal actually giving the people a raise, not putting money from the park board and taking it out of planning and zoning then?
Yeah, it would come out of a budget from the park board to assist in the um assistance with them.
But we're planning and budget, planning and zoning's budget for salaries remain the same. Basically, are the.
So if this were to leave, so uh uh so in two years, I figured. There's a lot that needs to go on. They need a at least a part-time assistance for themselves. It would go away. So this is to help kind of maybe make it forward.
So so if somebody's, one of your staff's making ten dollars now and the park board's putting in two dollars, are they gonna be making twelve dollars or are they reimbursing? The planning and zoning for the time they're spending is what I'm getting at.
They're they would see it as reimbursing for time planning and zoning is spending on.
They're not getting, we're not giving them a raise. We're just. We're just switching dollars.
I cause I would see it as if this were to go away. Well, raised.
It's like a raise. I put it in the park board budget separate. So if this ever goes away, I can say no to all that.
So so we are paying people more money for doing the same hours of work?
Yes.
Okay.
But how much is this gonna detract from their? Their planning and zoning fees?
Probably long-term a bad idea to 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 do this.
I think short-term it's a bad idea because I've got. You know, I also know that the county highway has two. People and Mr. Kirby can answer this. Basically dedicated to the park during the the season. And the park board also uses their equipment. The hall, whatever, they're pulling trailers. With private vehicles and I've seen them do that. They're using. Equipment that they probably aren't chained or trained on. That belongs to the county.
Are they doing it or your guys are doing it for them?
We do the work, the maintenance, but the. Park board does use the equipment.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, but you guys help mow their grass.
We do all of it.
Yeah. So that's kind of the same thing, but they're not they're not gonna stop them from going and doing that, right?
No, I'm just paying them. The highway.
That's kind of my point. We're we're kind of double dipping for the same amount of hours and.
Yeah, because they're coming out of county general. For planning and zoning. But Tim's losing two fellows.
Yeah.
They could.
And. And whatever they're doing. Or she's proposing that they do, they're not gonna be doing the regular job, right? Right, so that's.
The problem is, I don't think the park board's got the capability of.
Yeah, they probably need to hire a part-time person.
Doing what she's saying they're gonna do. As it currently is. I mean, they're volunteers. But should the taxpayers be made that?
Well, absolutely. I mean, they are. They have a budget in county general. The park board has monies that the county.
They aren't. They aren't.
Same thing.
They aren't with the salary. I mean, these people are. Basically salary people you're gonna use for the park board, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But that's coming out of Dearborn County taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
Right out of the tax and all the park board.
Now, Tim, do you do they do something like that for you? The park board, do you get money from them to manage it for them or anything?
I do get a stipend from the park board. I do get a stipend from the park board to manage all their maintenance. We take care of the funding issues and everything.
And that goes to you personally, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's basically the same thing.
I'm set up by the commissioner.
I mean, if she don't do it.
Who's gonna do it?
To hire somebody outside.
They used to have a guy named Jim Redelk who did the five-year plan. Jim's no longer on that board. I mean, they've acknowledged.
Do they rent the facilities now?
No, they don't. They people use it.
They want they want them, but they're in charge.
There's a chart.
Okay.
I had a child call me. His mother-in-law called to use uh Gladys Russell. And they wanted to charge her seven hundred and fifty bucks to use the barn at Gladys Russell for a family reunion. And they're Dearborn County taxpayers.
I did. We I don't know where who would have told them that because.
Answered the phone.
Yeah, I'm not sure because they haven't uh taken in any money for the people that I've uh talked to as far as renting. That's what we were. That's what I had found out, tried to find out too before, and that's why I talked to Leah and Bonnie. Um. Because they do have a donation um spot on their website. Um, and um I was trying to find out if they were to go make a reservation for one of the uh parks. Um, but there's no there's no fee on that. It's an automatic. You go to a calendar, you put your net, your information. Um. And that space is rented.
The park board has been working for a number of years to establish a system to charge a fee, which I think is only appropriate. But I don't know if they've ever actually been able to implement it yet.
It's all about calling the cities and towns to assist the park. Uh. With mowing and and maintenance, it happens everywhere. Uh, it sounds like the same thing's been going on here at Dearborn County.
What were you gonna say, Dan?
Is there a timeframe on the five-year plan?
So if it's not done every five years, exactly every five years, then you lose your ability for any grants or additional funding.
I mean, you're you're starting work on it now. Is there like a deadline? It's gotta be. I mean, you're you're starting work on it now, is there like a deadline when it's gotta be ten days?
So that's, yeah, cause it's all, right now it's all coinciding with the stellar program and they're working with us because. It wasn't started on until, I believe it was about October, um when we started talking about it and realized that there was no master plan. Current master plan for the park board, so I worked on it for about a month and a half and got it to the state. Um I've just now received the comments and I have to turn around and try to get it back into within a month. So that we're not losing ground on the uh timeframe for the stellar program.
And and. Stellar program, how do, how do we get, I mean, I know we got approved to, we we won that or we were awarded that. How does that money come to us?
So right now what the park board is um looking for is the land and conservation um. Part of the, there's multiple agencies that are a part of the stellar program. Um the Bright Meadows Park is looking at where it's a one-to-one match um up to a million dollars. So it's, there's still an application process, but what it is, is it's not competitive because we've been named stellar. So we don't have to compete with twenty other communities to be, we just have to meet the eligibility of the application.
Is there a timeframe on that money too, or I know we got it, we got awarded it.
Yeah, so the deadline.
Run out, when the money runs out or does that go on for years or how's that?
Is it three years?
Well, it's three to five years, I believe, depend, and it depends on which grant you're going for, so. Because there's different agencies and different grant portions of the whole stellar as a whole. Um each one has a different deadline, so for the park board, the application deadline is August first. But just with the other um parts of that program, there there's many other deadlines that. All the communities are working on at the same time. So and then like this particular one for the park board, it's almost a year process. For the review of the application because it goes through the state and federal. So we probably won't hear back from if there's things that need adjusted and stuff like that until next fall.
How much did we propose when we were going for stellar, wasn't it like uh seven hundred and fifty thousand, three seventy-five and three seventy-five with their match, is that right, Mike?
Uh we calculated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was committed.
Okay, so seven hundred thou, so we would get seven hundred thousand to spend with the matches.
Yeah, but uh fundraising could continue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike Groberg, one dear one, uh the fundraising could continue beyond even when the application goes in.
We can keep getting funds all the way up to a million dollar, we could, we could get a million dollars and they would match it with a million if if we're, I mean, if those, everything's in order, okay.
You know, that's, million dollars can come from a variety of local sources, so uh as we, you know, we have several already that are. Chipping in towards this project redevelopment, uh it's shipped in a hundred thousand, it's been a private donation, community foundation contribution toward the project.
Which is part of the reason why it was so important that the park board re-reevaluate the five-year plan to throw anything in there that they think might be something that the park board is interested in. Not that they have to do anything that's in the five-year plan, but if it's not included in the five-year plan, I believe it's ineligible for those IDNR stellar dollars.
Sounds like time is of the essence now, and this, we need to get this plan.
Yeah, well, the five-year plan not only is for the, the, it's um needed um quickly for the stellar program. But the five-year plan um will continue every five years and that is important because the park board. So the years that had, the plan has not been in place, those are years that are potentially um grants have been missed. Missed opportunities to have certain improvements at the parks.
And the five-year plan also includes all the parks, not just Bright Meadows, which is the stellar project.
Yeah.
Well, the point I was saying earlier, the park board currently couldn't do that on their own.
They can't do that.
No way. And they'd like to hire someone. Efficiency standpoint, for them to hire a part-time person, I mean, this is a nine-thousand-dollar line item. For her to have folks with various levels of expertise who can take on pieces of it and do it while they're in the. Business of their normal operating day, to answer the phones and do some additional things is the most efficient way. Conversation, it sounds like what we're having is, is that something that's eligible for an additional stipend versus is that part of your regular opera, your. Regular responsibilities, cause it's not above and beyond your thirty-five hours and we had that conversation multiple times with different. Department heads and like, like you mentioned, Mr. Gravy has a stipend for managing the parks, I don't know if that's any additional time, but it's definitely. Additional responsibility and stress, and so that is something that is eligible for additional pay. This is, in my opinion, is either gonna come from this area or it's gonna come directly from the park board. You're the, seems like the most efficient way and we can try this for sure.
Sure, trying to why it would come out of county general. I mean, it, yeah, it is, but it's, it's, it's all gonna come out of a county general account. Whether it's planning and zoning or parks.
Right.
So it, that, that's not really a consideration right now, but I think that, like you said, the time is of the essence, they don't have that ability to do it in-house. And we need to.
This needs something to get done now.
Sounds like it to me.
And and if it's taking too much time away from planning and zoning, park board's gonna have to hire a part-time person or something.
And I plan on either relating that to them or to even council later on to be able to see. Because I, if this works well, and I hope it does, um. I would be of the opinion that it needs to go to either a part-time person that is one hundred percent with, to the parks. Or it's a full-time position, but I, there's a stepping stone that I think needs to happen to be able to evaluate whether, how much time that is needed. Um and if it's uh worth it in the long run.
How many uh five-year plans done in other years? You did that one five years ago, one ten years ago?
We haven't had one since two thousand seventeen.
I look at my files, he might say five more.
Yeah, cause when Jim Redelk was on.
And he was the one doing it, yes.
But there's no expertise on the board now to to do it in-house, so it seems.
On December fifth, the park board unanimously approved. For a group to have a bright community festival in the park. Unanimously approved it. The people on that committee worked on that stuff. And then all of a sudden on March the seventh. They got a email that says, no, you're no longer approved, so what's the story on that?
For this year, so on that date, they had their attorney reviewing a contract, a lease contract that they had created. Um for those days to have the bike festival, which was um for the end of July. Um the entities that were um named in that contract had yet, not been yet created. So they couldn't even sign the contract to move forward, um so the park board felt that um it, the time. It was squeezing in to be able to, to make that happen this year. So they wanted to n- not do this year, but continue working towards it to do for next year, that way things were properly set up that they can move forward with that.
Why weren't they notified between December and March, you know?
I don't, because I don't think the contract was up, cause the um at the um March meeting, that's when the attorney was. Had reviewed the contract and that's when they talked about the contract.
But they had them unanimous approval in December, they went ahead and started planning for a festival. And you didn't let them know till March?
That, and that is before I got involved as far as, I was just doing the stellar, but I approached, had that meeting, I was in attendance to that meeting. Um I was in attendance to their December meeting, I think they voted to uh move forward with the process. But they can't move forward with the, they didn't feel that they could move forward with the contract, the lease contract. That would, for the liability purposes and any damages and stuff like that, I don't think they were ready to move forward with that contract and didn't believe there was enough time to. Put that all together to do that.
But Kirk Gassner and Eubank, both attorneys, worked on that contract together. And they were under the assumption that, yes, we're going ahead.
The, Rob Eubank, at least at the meeting, had said that the entities weren't even created and you couldn't even move forward with the contract. Because there was no legal entities, they were names on a paper, but they hadn't been created yet. So they technically, even at that meeting, if they were ready to sign a contract, they couldn't because the entities weren't, hadn't been created.
So is this gonna become a habit with the park board?
No, I believe they want to move forward with it, they, they were looking forward to it, but I think the timeframe to get that organized by July. Was squeezing in and they didn't feel that they could get the contract signed to move forward with it by July.
I think, I think the park board and all entities involved, including the county, should be concerned about the liability and exposure that we put ourselves out front of and. I think. I wasn't at the meeting, it sounds like it's a, basically like a memorandum of understanding, we're happy to move forward, but until the entities are set up, we can't legally en- enter into a, a contract.
Well, I think we got the same liability with volunteers using county equipment all and up and down the road.
Yep.
You know, we need county employees hooking on the trailers, hauling stuff wherever it needs to go. The volunteers with their own personal vehicles.
Yep.
Cause if you get out there on US fifty or something and there's a bad wreck, who are they gonna come after?
That's right.
He was propels to Durbin County, it's not the park board.
So we have a request from planning and zoning for a total of ten thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to assist. Uh Durbin County parks with their five-year plan and being compliance for stellar, is there a motion to approve this request?
Considering, I don't think they can do it without help, I'll.
This is hire somebody to do the whole same thing.
Yeah, why don't they do that?
Do what?
Why don't they just hire a part-time employee to do all this stuff? It's still gonna be.
Still coming out of county general, there's kind of.
Coming out of park board.
Park board and planning and zoning.
Somewhere, park board, the money got bumped from one to percent to three percent.
That's, that's a separate fund, we're talking about county general, and they do have county general monies, so there's. Planning zoning has, you know, bulk, if not all of their budget is pl- is out of county general. Park board has money that comes out of county general and out of county farm for day-to-day type of stuff. The money that's for the riverboat monies that goes to the park board is for capital improvements and land acquisition. Not for this sort of thing, so we do have a motion, is there a second to uh prove this ten thousand five twenty for planning and zoning to help the park board?
I'll second it.
Is that Tim?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor sitting by the same eye?
Aye.
Those, no?
No.
Dan made the motion, I second it.
We asked for a uh.
You want a roll call vote, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Glenn?
No.
Dennis? Mark?
Yes, yes, yes.
Motion passes, and are you presenting for nine-one-one?
Yes, I am. This is to help with GIS data that is used by um nine-one-one services. Uh we had a contract with DataMark prior, um it actually expired in September twenty twenty-four. Um this was usually headed up by Jared, um. I knew about, well, I used the program, so I knew it, but I didn't know when it expired, when Jared left. Was contacted by DataMark and said, hey, we, did you realize that it expired? Um I said, no, so we got into um the, cause we had a five-year contract prior. Um and I asked them to go ahead and look at an additional five-year contract. Um this is for the services and a, what they call a VEP editor. Uh this goes through and there's a couple of different things that it does as we work uh towards um. NINA standards and ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent um accuracy with the information. We can run evaluation as often as we want with this program, find issues with addressing. Uh find issues, it would either be address points, center lines, there's boundaries related to uh EMS, fire. Uh police, there's uh ESN boundaries that are associated with that, all that works together as. When it goes into the call center for nine-one-one, um it rots traps. It is the quickest routes also for nine-one-one and the emergency services, so that uh more accurate the information, the better is for nine-one-one. So we use this program to validate often through that and find the problems that are associated with addressing. To improve, uh we started this um over five years ago. As Indiana had made an announcement that in the future they were going to want counties to be um. Nina or meet NINA standards, which is the National um Numbering Association for uh addressing. Um they wanted to be able, the whole state and all the counties within state to meet those um standards. Uh me and Jared started that back when they made that announcement that they were gonna require it. They had said what they, they were gonna require, but we've started that process. Um and in the paperwork, um that, I don't know if you received it. Uh but with this um information and with the program, um and the steps that we are taking. Um the uh state recognizes counties for their GIS information being as accurate as possible. And in two thousand twenty-one, we started off as a silver star, uh which we were one of fifteen counties. And in twenty twenty-two, uh we moved up to gold star standards, which means most of our layers. Uh match the state and NINA standards requirements, um they're correctly populated within the state's information as well. Uh we were one of fourteen counties at that time, and twenty twenty-three, we still maintained our gold star standard. But we were one of twenty-eight and as of twenty twenty-four, they have now put a, an additional um. Uh platinum star to strive for, um and there's only currently uh fourteen counties. Which we believe after um working with this, um we will hopefully reach that within twenty twenty-six with our data. Um and be released uh recognized within the state as having um. Close to accurate information as possible for nine-one-one services.
Who has access to that information?
So as far as editing rights or viewing rights?
Viewing.
So viewing, so there are a lot of information, there is a lot of information that is on the Beacon mapping uh website for the county.
So that, this is integrated with that, with the Beacon Schneider thing, okay.
So for instance, and ju- so if you see an address point, you may only see an address point on the surface. But actually in the background, uh there are thirty fields to an address point. So um and it's set up so that it can work with the satellites, it can work with ESNs. So and it's zip code related, um ENSAG related, um there are also. Aliases that are put in, so for instance, you have to realize that US fifty is not always US fifty, it is US fifty, Green Boulevard. East Eats Parkway, Eats Parkway West, so the, so all those go in a field, so.
Who edits all that?
So I do the um satellites, I do the addressing, um we also do um. Help with the boundary layers that are the ESN um layer, the. Um our EMS, so recently when there was a um. I believe it is, yeah, EMS layers were changed, uh I went in there to make those changes and uh um. Then it works with nine-one-one information on that end, um then their system works separately of that. Uh so this validation um program ensures that we are working towards those and finding those anomalies. This is also gonna work with, I'm currently um in the process of filing for a seed grant as well. Um and that will, which the state is, through the state, um and they're kind of ensuring that every county. Gets a part of this, um because they're really pushing. You can um submit from now or from January till January twenty-sixth. They're rolling eight counties per month, and if you don't win that month. You're still on the draw for the next month and the next month, the next month, and then once you are awarded, um you have a year to complete. So we are also working with um DataMark and they are going to run the full validation for us. They're going to give us all the issues upfront, they're going to fix any boundary overlaps gaps that we have within that year. Through that grant program as well.
How much was their contract the last five years?
It was. A year, I take that back and it's risen to ten thousand uh a year.
Is there any, any other players?
Is there any other players in that game that we can get quotes from or not?
Uh, I will tell you this, through the seed program, um and I dig with just the Indiana uh geographic information system through this grant. Uh, DataMark is the one that they are using for all validation.
They double and a half their price for in five years.
Well, the the five years with the programs and the way they um upgrade them and everything like that, you can see it. The one thing that's nice about getting the contract signed in five years is that we maintain that um price over the five years. Um, instead of having to worry about whether or not they're gonna raise it a percentage or not.
You have continuity.
Yes.
Any other questions, René Cole? Is there a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars out of county general for this um?
And that'll be over the next five years, so it'll be ten thousand.
Like that in a year.
Yes.
Will we approve it in ten thousand or fifty thousand?
If we do ten thousand this year, we could put it into the budget, but at least with the contract being over twenty-five thousand too, we could this to commissioners and to you for. Uh, recognizing the contract, but the additional would be for the ten thousand and the additional um. Years we would put into the nine-one-one budget.
So it sounds like to me if we were to approve it for the five-year period, we'd be lacking in the price. Would we pay it over a period of five years?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that?
Liz, you have an opinion on the fund, looks like we have.
I think.
Listed as well.
I would do county general. I recommend doing that county general.
Listen, we do the fifty thousand, we could just encompass it in a year.
Okay.
Because that's what we say.
Thank you, Tony.
This is detrimental to maintaining nine-one-one accuracy for calls, that's something we. Can't put on, in my opinion, so I'll make a motion to approve this out of county general for fifty thousand over five years.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-nay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the House Department, Mr. Director Grant. Lee, are you presenting for that?
For the local public health services fund, this is just a request to make their budget whole. At budget time, they weren't sure how much money they were gonna get approved from the state. And it was three thousand forty-five dollars and two cents short from what they approved, so.
Okay, so we simply need a motion to make that correction, is there a motion to approve that? Thank you, Doug, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Danny, discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-nay, motion passes, and they've also got a grant request.
They do, you didn't know that, they're up on the hill in Swanson.
So this is a a health grant and it's the CDC Foundation Grant to Link Teens to Healthcare. And what Amy explained to me is there were only six in the nation awarded, two were here in Indiana and one is ours. And what they do, it's uh four hundred and eighty thousand, but it's only, I think it's eighty thousand a year for six years. And once you're awarded, then they do like a think tank and they. Uh, decide what the money should be used on to help these teens, you know, if it's mental health. Or whatever, but it sounds like a good program and there's no county match.
Is there a motion to approve this grant?
Back to motion.
Thank you, Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Does that require everyone's signature?
Yes.
Yours. Kanye, do you know who wrote the grant request?
Amy. She does law, she does.
She does a great job.
Yeah, she does.
She's done great with this move too.
One or two departments remain here for.
Um. Food specialists and. All rest of them up there.
Okay, there's gonna be several documents, we're gonna require signatures later in the meeting, so we're gonna ask that everyone. Just bear with us and we'll sign as we go along, so we don't miss anything. Uh, next on our agenda is highway. Or repair.
Good evening, Tim Grebby, Highway Superintendent. Uh, I have two requests tonight, uh one's for thirty thousand dollars and that is for our equipment repair budget. Make it whole again, because we spent a fortune during the winter fixing trucks and. With the bad winter we've had, we've spent a fortune with trying to keep everything on the road and moving.
Yeah, let's just take these one at a time, so the first one is thirty thousand dollars, this is a pair, vehicles or goods?
Equipment.
So I know the city of Cincinnati ran into major problems with their equipment because of all the snow eyes we've had this year, so. It's not out of the ordinary, um.
Mister Grebby, I think we, with the two new trucks we appropriated for this year?
We got four.
Not on the road yet.
Because of just trying to get them.
Will we roll any of the old ones off and if so, is there any trade-in value or anything like that?
We ran into the, we got, we had an auction here recently. Uh, we sold one of our trucks, it was a two thousand eight, we got five thousand dollars for it.
So I guess the question I was gonna ask is, are these repairs on trucks that are, we're gonna be rolling out, or these trucks that are gonna be in our fleet for a little while?
A little while, we're trying to, whatever, what we, what we think we're gonna get rid of. As we're in hope of next season, we're gonna have uh four new trucks on the road. So those four trucks, we've already kind of set aside, do we still use them? Yes, we do, we use them in limited, more imminent since winter's kind of over.
Are we, we're gonna get, are we gonna um remove some then from the fleet?
Yes, there will be some gone, yep.
How many total trucks do you have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, how many drivers do you have?
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve this um request for thirty thousand dollars for repair to vehicles?
I'll move it.
And this will be out of county general, still all right with you, Glenn? Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next one is.
Our next one uh is to kind of make my budget solvent, uh we took aggregate money out to buy. So we ran out of salt money budget, our budget money in our salt budget, so. We took aggregate money because we can move that down in that line item and and we've used that and we're trying to. I'm asking to get the money back in aggregate, so uh make that site whole again, so we can do all our projects this summer.
Because you had to buy more salt?
Yes, I did buy a lot of salt.
And how, how much, what was it, you you told me before and I didn't.
I got all that, we, we went through uh. Close to three hundred fifty, uh. Um, I mean, thirty-five hundred tons this year almost.
It's like fifteen hundred more tons than normal, you said.
It's like fifteen hundred tons more than that, uh we spent our whole contractor's budget. Because we do bank in some subdivisions in the southern area too with contractors now, because we don't have as many people as we used to. And we spent that whole budget out, I'm not here to, you know, ask for that, because we don't need it till next year again, so. We'll deal with that at budget time in August, but yeah, we spent uh, you know, our whole contract out, um. We spent like forty-two thousand dollars during that big snow on overtime, I mean, we've spent a lot of money here, Cheryl, a lot of money.
It was a long winter.
Yeah, it's over yet.
So you're looking for seventy-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Make that whole.
To make that.
Fund eleven sixty-nine, is there a motion to approve this request? Thank you, Dan, and thank you, uh.
Dennis.
Dennis and. Motion is second, motion by Dan, second by. Um, sorry, motion by Dennis, second by Glenn to approve the seventy-five thousand, I have eleven seventy-six, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Then I got a question. You guys, your aggregates are also used in the parks, for the parking lots and.
Uh, we haven't, no, we have not done that. We've, 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 let me qualify that, we have used on the patch. We have used some aggregate on the path that goes back to the shooting, that that long driveway.
Right.
We have used some stone on that, uh we replaced car wash on that drive too. Um, but in terms of actually doing. We, we, we haven't done a re, like a reclamation of the parking lot or anything, we have not, we do spray them on with, you know, the sign and then we do. Um, you know, so we try to take care of it as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mister, Mister.
My name is Rishman County Engineer, I'm asking for an additional hundred and thirty, hundred and twenty-five thousand. For uh in culvert repair, uh it's for uh. Doing uh bridge deck epoxy overlays and repairs to numerous bridges. In the county, basically, we're trying to do is extend the life of the bridges by uh doing some patching, some joint repair. And then doing the, then epoxy overlays, basically trying to seal the decks of the concrete bridges. To uh, to seal them, so eliminate the salts. From going down through the decks and getting to the reseal and deteriorating the bridges. So we don't have to do bridge deck replacements like we're gonna have to do on York Ridge Bridge uh in the near future.
Oh, York Ridge, okay.
Yeah, the big one there, uh over Tanner's Creek on York Ridge Bridge, I'll be coming back for funding on that, but the uh. We'd love to try to do it in bridge deck overlay, uh however, once we got out there and started doing uh. Uh, more sampling on the actual deck, the deck was beyond uh. Uh, doing an overlay is required replacement, so we're having it designed that way as we speak. Uh, we'll be coming back for Monday for doing that construction later, but right now, I have two hundred thousand dollars in my budget. Uh, the estimates to do the structures that I'm requesting to try to do this year. Uh, around two hundred and seventy thousand, that would then leave me with about fifty-five thousand dollars. To do any repairs that are unforeseen between now and the end of the year. Uh, we did, uh Mister Grebby, we're also looking at probably having to come back in May. Uh, to try to do something with the uh bridge, drive forward crossing at the Longman. That is getting very, very rough again, uh. We can't patch it if that's the uh what's gonna happen depending on cost, but we are gonna be looking at a. Uh, concrete deck placement on top of that, to try to fix that structure and make it that to last a lot longer.
Where is that one?
It's at the bottom of Longman where uh Beatty and Smaltz and Longman all come together, right there. It's basically, it's a very long, it's considered a bridge because of the length of the crossing, but basically, it's a big drive forward.
Yeah.
And if you, Danny, you've probably driven over it, we patched it and patched it, patched it, and it's starting to get in good shape and uh. I'm working with a contractor right now, getting an estimate, a couple contractors, get estimates on what it's gonna take to actually try to do a. Uh, concrete overlay over top of that structure.
Mister Listerman, these epoxy overlays, is that the same process you use on the bridge at the bottom of North Dearborn and Jameson Crossing?
Correct, basically what happens is, it's what state uses, uh basically what you do block top sealer for asphalt. We use what they call a two-part epoxy, thin epoxy overlay. Basically, the stone that you get actually comes out of Oklahoma, okay, because of the hardness of the stone. And the granules that you use, uh basically you do a two-part system. You sandblast the top of the structure off, get completely clean. Then you come back with a first layer of thin epoxy overlay, all by a layer of the rock. And then uh you let that dry and you go back and do a second seal to make sure you got a good thickness and you got a complete seal of that structure. So there's no way any salts, water can penetrate into that deck. And it's part of to preserve your bridges, basically, it's a way to extend life for your bridges because of the. Cost to replace bridges is so high.
Obviously, you've been happy with the product down there on that bridge.
Correct, and we've been happy with. We've got, so far, we've done about twenty-two structures that might, that meet the criteria to do this with. Uh, so you try to, try to do is you try to go back and look at uh. New structures that are built now, be as the structure on Sneakville Road. Uh, the structure we're gonna place on uh North Hoger Road this year, basically what you do is you let them winter a couple of years. Make sure you get all your shrinkage crackies done, and then you come back and do your overlay, so you try to do it anywhere between two to five years. After the bridge is constructed, to try to extend the life of that structure, it's a lot cheaper to do a thin epoxy overlay. Than to do a complete uh latex, uh silicone overlay. Or in the case of York Ridge Bridge, a complete bridge replaced or deck replacement.
You mentioned doing some repairs on some existing bridges out of this.
This is the same bridges I'm gonna pack, do the seal on, I want them going and do all the joints. And there's some, there's some repair work at the joints that need to be done, concrete repairs prior to us putting epoxy on.
So you're doing this on some older bridges too, then you're repairing?
ribbles an example.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so ribble's still in good enough shape that we can go do the joints and uh.
So last year, we, we allocated a hundred and fifty thousand and then at budget time, we did two hundred thousand and now you're asking for a hundred and twenty-five additional, so that'll be three twenty-five.
Correct.
Instead of the one fifty that we've been doing in the past year, so.
Right now, because of everything else, to try to get what we need and what's age-wise appropriate to get done. Uh, we're looking at right now, the estimate I have is about two hundred and seventy thousand. So North Dearborn, another one we're doing to do is North Dearborn, down there, come between New Alice and one. To come down the hill, the big bridge right there, so some of the structures we're doing are very large structures compared to some of the little ones we've done in the past. But I want to try to save the ones we can, uh Chesterfield out there, off of uh. Lower Dillsboro, that structure right there, that's another one, it's on the list to be done.
Sounds like maybe what Mister Doyle's asking about is, maybe might try to forecast better next year if we know. How many bridges are at that sweet spot at two, three winters that we've gone through, and we can try to appropriate better at budget time.
Well, I seen you ask for two fifty and whatever reason, I think we cut it to two hundred thousand.
Did.
So that's what, I, I don't remember why anymore, because we've had so many.
It says a two-cube bridge, okay, it's, my funds, cube bridge is where it is. So when I have to come back for additional funds, it has to come back from one of the different casino counts. So we just, so we just waited till we knew more of what the costs were actually physically gonna be when we came out, so.
And underneath that item, oh, there's a separate line item for several different bridges. That felt probably be beneficial to put that in there instead of your culvert repair, which is really nothing to do with what we're doing here, right?
Well, it's, the way it's like, it should be, the line item should be bridge slash culvert repair, okay? Because basically, anything, I mean, it can be done on small structures as well as. Bridges, small structures being less than twenty-foot, bridges being over twenty-foot, so it, it, it doesn't, and then if it, depending what the other repairs are. I mean, I could be a small structure repair, if I lost, I lost the wing wall on an old bridge, it needed to be contracted work in to replace the wing wall. Or some kind of undercutting underneath the structure where it's getting scour critical, that we had to do repair work. That's all paid out as contracts, culvert repair, just the way it's worded in against the way it's coded in the system. But that's what it is, it's bridge culvert repair, and it's contract work, stuff that can't be done through Mister Grebby through other items.
Thank you for the explanation, this was advertised out of the Riverboat forty-nine sixteen for this, the one twenty-five for. Bridge deck epoxy overlays and repairs, is there a motion to approve this request? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-nay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Listerman.
Next on our agenda is, uh, we want to open a public hearing for more lane economic revitalization area. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? Tony, have you got any requests? If there's no one from the public wanting to speak, then we can close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, next on the agenda is. Uh twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three confirmatory resolution of the Devon County. Council confirming designation of a certain area within the Moore Drive revitalization area, the presentation will be by Mister Deaton from. Uh one Dearborn or Devon County Development Commission and uh Mike Holberg from one Dearborn, is that correct?
Afternoon, I'm uh Jim Deaton, the president of the Devon County Redevelopment Commission. And uh my purpose this afternoon is to support Whitewater Industries in their request for tax abatement. So Whitewater Industries. We've already had like.
The first part is gonna be the resolution confirming that area as a revitalization area.
Sure, like, it's uh I'm I'm here for two things.
Ordinance, all right, okay.
I guess I'm here for two things.
I think it was Deaton wanted to make a statement, I guess, first.
Two resolutions that they.
Sorry, two separate resolutions.
If you'd like to hear from Mister Deaton and all of the company. And uh but there are other experts that are here tonight, fire to any of the two votes, that's that you're discussing.
Well, I think we need, do we need to take one at a time? I mean, it seems like we would need to do the revitalization before we could even do the second, the abatement, you can't do the abatement without the first one.
About letting them do their presentation.
Sure.
Yeah, uh actually, as we'd be saying about the same thing for both of them.
Okay.
Uh the uh. Revitalization area was basically so that we could have uh. The means it takes to go in and redo the road that would be going in. To the, to the area and to improve the railroad crossing and uh. We we were here a month ago and we addressed the same subject. And there were some concerns raised at that time, and concerns that are are going to influence both, we believe, the. Creation of the revitalization area and the tax abatement, so the presentation would kind of like.
Okay.
You would, would impact both of those. And the concerns that were raised at the last meeting, the. Pardon us to uh consider ensuring the proposed water withdrawals and wastewater discharges. That could negatively or possibly negatively impact the river, the local and the aquifer. For the uses of either one of those, and that was something that we decided we wanted to make sure we were guarding against. We were really enthused about this project and what it was going to bring us, we didn't want any bad consequences either. We really wanted a ninety thousand square foot building, we really wanted thirty-two thousand, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight million dollars in in. In investment and a hundred and thirty jobs coming into the area, we were excited about that. But we were presented with some challenges that we wanted to overcome, to do that. We decided to go to an independent third party, a third party, it'd never be Intera. And we contracted with uh Intera, they assigned. Two licensed engineers who were both hydrologists to take a look at this project. And determine what effect it would have on the uh. The groundwater, the aquifer, and all its neighbors who are depending on that water. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to the uh engineers who did the study. And let them describe what they have determined in uh their independent third-party analysis.
Thank you.
Do it, please.
Thanks for the intro, Jim, my name is Red Moore, I'm with a company called Intera, I'm here with my colleague Brad Schrader. We're gonna talk about uh the results of our analysis of the potential impacts on the water resource of Project Fresh. I've got quite a few slides to go through here, so I'll go kind of rapidly and then we can, of course, any questions. Uh first, uh just gonna talk about the goals of the analysis. And uh over your project fresh as it relates to water withdrawals. Uh then I'm gonna talk about the potential impacts of the proposed water use on the the water resource. And then Brad is gonna talk about the wastewater discharge impacts, and then he'll conclude with the results uh in in the summary. So the project objectives were twofold, one of the assess potential impacts of the project on aquifer withdrawals on the resource. And existing water users, and evaluate potential water quality impacts to the river from the proposed wastewater facility. Just uh if you don't know, reminder where it was located upstream of West Harrison. The interchange of Fishki and Seventy-four, and I'm noteworthy that it's along the Whitewater River. Then I will give you the main components, uh as Jim mentioned, it's ninety thousand square foot turkey processing facility. Uh production wells on site provide cooling water and potable water supply. Wastewater treatment plant to treat the water that needs to be treated, then the cooling water lagoon to let the. Let the cooling water stabilize in temperature before all of this would go to the river through permitted discharge uh down by the river. Uh just so we know how much water we're talking about here, this is a water plus water process flow chart, this has been involving as the engineering is involved on this project. Uh they're gonna pump one point six NGD from wells for non-contact cooling, which will go to the lagoon and then. And then eventually out to the river when the temperature is stabilized, they're gonna pump point two NGD, that's million gallons per day. For a potable supply for turkey production in the offices, that will go to the wastewater treatment plant and then on to. Uh the outfall through the permitted discharge.
And that's an onsite waste.
Onsite, onsite wastewater treatment plant, that's correct. So I'm gonna talk about the river flows and offer water levels, first question, what's the impact of the water withdrawals to the river? Well, the river and the aquifer are kind of one resource, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the 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 aquifer first. So the entire project is underlined by an all-gas aquifer, it's called the Whitewater Valley Aquifer System. Uh it's the most productive aquifer in the county, uh it's composed of sandy gravel that was posited by glaciers during the Si Energy. Glacial melt, it filled the Bedawell Valleys, about twenty-five to seventy feet of uh. Sandy gravel in the area, and it's, it's, like I said, good offer materials for uh withdrawals like this. So the river and aquifer are kind of one resource as we see it, uh and the river interacts with the aquifer and production wells within the valleys. Uh under natural conditions like the schematic on the top. Uh uh precipitation is the ground surface, it propulates down to the water table, the water table rises. And creates gradient towards the river, that's with uh under natural conditions, if you put a well in there. The well will just intercept water on the way to the river uh 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 under its natural course. If you were to pump the uh the well higher or move it closer to the river, it can. Intercept this water as well as hold water from the river, we call this induced recharge. So the project, uh well, I'll get to that, so let's look at flows in the river. Uh there's a USGS stream gauge in Brookville below the confluence, below the dam. And they've been measuring flows daily since nineteen seventy-five, since the the dam went into operation, so this. Uh flow duration curve just shows the percentage of days the river flow equals or exceeds a certain value based on all the data since nineteen seventy-five. Uh like the example shown here, fifty percent of the time, uh the flows in the river exceed five hundred NGD, this is just to kind of put the the. The project uh withdrawals in in some perspective. What we're interested in is the low flows, because that's when it can impact the river the most, when there's little water in the river. Uh low flows downstream of the project site are expected to be higher, because there's about twenty miles between twenty river miles, fifteen or twenty between the. This stream gauge and the project site, we expect it to be higher than what is shown here. Due to uh tributaries, of course, uh the natural groundwater inflow and then upstream discharges coming into it, so. The planned withdrawals represent less than two point five percent of the lowest flows in the river, so small component. And I'll describe most of this of where it's back to the river anyway. So. Proposed wells would intercept groundwater that would have natural discharge of the river and induced recharge from the river, as I mentioned. Uh the operation will affect the timing of flows to the river, it's not gonna affect the overall water balance. All the water used uh would eventually be discharged uh through the outfall, the only exception to this would be what would be lost through evaporation from the lagoons. And we would expect this to be just a miniscule amount, so this is called consumptive use, uh where the water is a little reginal. But most of the water used will wind up back in the river uh uh in any case. So given that the lowest flows observed in the river are in excess of eighty NGD, the consumptive use would be a very, very small portion of the total river flow. So what's the impact of water draws on the groundwater levels and existing users? Uh we brought a computer model just to kind of look at what the drawdown might be, now, what is drawdown? Drawdown describes the drop in the aquifer level due to a pumping well. Uh the drawdown will be highest near the pumping well and when greedy out uh beyond the well. Uh the straw that can affect any nearby wells uh as shown in the in the schematic here. Uh if the water levels drop below a pump, it can make a well immobile and affect it negatively. So with this computer, computer model, we just looked at kind of a worst-case scenario of what those drawdowns might be. Due to the proposed pumping, this uh graph just shows a a simulated simulation based on a worst-case scenario. And uh that result is, you know, the groundwater would be uh drawn down one to two feet. In the surrounding area, uh the surrounding parcels, there would be no impact to nearby registered high-capacity wells. So the zero-foot contour would be the worst-case uh um extent of the effect of pumping and. City of Harrison production wells are well downstream, the nearest one upstream would be Harrison Sandy Gravel, and those would be unaffected by this. Worst-case scenario of this topic. Uh it's unknown if there are private wells at adjacent parcels, we kind of circle or square here. Some places that might have uh private wells, there's no way to know if there's private well, the location, the high-capacity wells have to register with the state. But there there could be private wells out there, if so, private well, it could be impacted depending on well construction, that is, depending on how deep it is. Depending on where the pump is located, uh but if any private wells are negatively impacted. Whitewater Processing would be on the hook for for mitigating that, that is.
Is that an indefinite timeline, or is there a certain timeline that sunsets?
No, there there's not a timeline, uh they would be on the hook for. Uh lowering somebody's pump if that were the case, or drilling a new well, or helping them to get hooked up to municipal water.
Great, thank you.
I'm gonna hand it over to Brad now, who can talk about the wastewater discharge impact.
Hi, I'm Brad Schrader, I'm gonna talk about potential impacts from discharging of treated water from the processing plant. Uh so as uh Rhett talked about, there's. Two different really water separations through the plant, so you have one point six NGD. That would flow through a non-contact cooling system into the lagoons, it would warm up. And then it would come to a single discharge point for going out, so this water is, the general impact of this water sees is heat from the process. Goes to the lagoon, cools down and then discharges. And the second stream of water, which is point two NGD or two hundred gallons per day, that is actually part of the processing and that's what would pick up. That needs to be treated really more severely than than what would come out of it. That will also, then that will go through a separate water treatment plant, it'll join up with the outfall of the. Lagoon and then discharge at a single point into the river. All of this is controlled by uh MPDS permit, which I'll talk a little bit more about in the next slide. But first, let's just look now, not at the cooling water, but the wastewater through the process, typically what we've seen and what what's been observed in their other other plant. Um the main thing you run into that would be a pollutant would be a high levels organic matter, so this is fats, oil and grease, proteins. And it all is kind of measured in biological oxygen demand, it's really the same type of waste that you get at a normal wastewater treatment plant, it's during the same thing. Our human waste has similar, similar amounts. What's different is the biological oxygen demand levels, which really sets the limit. What's coming out of this plant is around six hundred to eight hundred milligrams per liter before treatment. What a wastewater treatment plant is from a municipal, they're seeing about two hundred milligrams per liter coming in, so. This is having to treat about four times the strength of waste that's coming in from a municipal plant, so it is higher in these organic matters. What you'd find in a municipal facility. Some of the other parts that are typically regulated are total suspended solids, this is just to keep clarity of water fundamentally. And then ammonia, which is, you know, nitrogen or in in the form of ammonia. And then, of course, bacteriological, we want you to look at your bacteriological load potentially, and again, both types of facilities deal with this. So the natural discharge elimination system comes out of the Clean Water Act, it it's uh managed by the state, so in this case, Item manages this. They issue permits, so you cannot discharge into a water body of the state, which is the Whitewater River, is that without getting a permit. Typically, you all your wastewater plants do this, your municipal plants have a permit to operate, they'll often receive industrial industrial. Waste, which then they'll also treat. Also, you have industrial facilities, they'll also get their own permit, and it's managed the same way as a municipal. Facility is, so in this case, Item sets limits on what you're allowed to discharge into the river to keep the river safe. And they're the ones that do that, and they set the limits and then they manage the whole program. But they're doing it. Then Item does that, so Item sets limits, and then they have reporting requirements where they're constantly reporting monthly and weekly. Outfall and then uh Item will also come and do inspections on on the plant and make sure it's operating. So they administer the whole program, they set the permit, the limits, and then they come and do, and then they manage to make sure it's being met and. And issue file, you know, then they issue, if you exceed the permits, then you get into, you know. Corrective actions and that kind of thing too, so they're looking at that and have a process to deal with things when you, when you exceed it. One thing to note here is that, so. There'll be really two different permits, because what's coming through the clear water system, the one point six NGD. They're really only concerned generally with temperature and and pH acidity. It's really the main thing that there is, because it isn't contacting anything, but it is warm and it could change the pH. So that's, that's looking at the one point six NGD, they'll measure that before it combines with the other lakes. So you have one level measuring right at the outfall of that, then you have a wastewater treatment plant, which will have its own limits of different things. That'll be measured before they combine, so what they do is they measure in each process and each waste stream, so. Otherwise, if you did it after they combined, it would be heavily diluted, and you'd be looking at a diluted waste, and they really want to manage what's coming out of what's water treatment plant. So for this, I know as as we did this last time, we. Um they're still don't have these MPDS, Items not set MPDS permit limits on this yet, so. This is gonna drive all the treatment processes that they're gonna design to meet the limits. This is this, this company's facility in Harrison, so this is limits that were set by the Ohio BPA. So we would expect Item to do something, not saying it's gonna be the same, but Item will follow the same process as Ohio EPA. And they'll set limits, so I won't go through the numbers, I think the thing I highlighted in yellow is if we remember the BOD. Is coming in at like eight hundred milligrams per liter into this. The limit on this one and on the Ohio side is ten milligrams per liter on the outfall, so. That's how much reduction they need to do in BOD to meet the permit requirements, this is standard for normal wastewater treatment plant, so. Municipal plants will have very similar limits as this, so it's it's right in line, in fact, this is considered on the. The tighter end of limits, and again, I'm not saying Item will do this, for two municipal plants upriver in Indiana, they have. It's thirty and a and a twenty-five is the limit, so it's a little bit looser, so. It's gonna be in that range, it's a high-level reduction, and Item sets it to to make it work. Unique here is oil and grease, you don't see that, you're usually municipal, because it generates a lot of that, so they set limits on oil and grease. Make sure you're not dumping a bunch of grease in the river, and it's kind of treated separately. And then standard, this is just other standard things you see in dissolved oxygen, make sure we're not producing that. And then E. coli is key, because that really measures your bacterial load, that's really telling you, are you killing all the bacteria through this process before you discharge it? So the process, I won't really talk about this much, it's not been set up, but it is quite a few mechanical systems that do this, you've got a. Bar screen to move solids, you have systems to move the fats, oil and grease, different ones, it's a biological process that breaks down the BOD. And then depending on the permit level, you can have another filter at the back end to filter out to reduce the suspended solids. And then finally, at the end, you have to disinfect the water, and that's done with ultraviolet, sometimes it's done with chlorine, it can be done with peroxide. All of these are designed to kill all the, all the bad bacteria coming out of it. So. Really, what are the impacts, it's all gonna be managed by this permit, they're gonna design a plant to meet the permit, Item's gonna manage it, it should. It should fulfill, just like any other municipal. Item's gonna manage it. It should be should be full, just like any other municipal source. So I'm gonna summarize for both of us, I think, here. We have a summary. Um, and also the one for the groundwater wells is kind of return to the river. So as far as very, very little consumption use, they're gonna take water out, borrow it, clean it, put it back, basically into the river. Worst case scenario, you'll see one to ten feet of drawdown in the neighboring wells. If they create a problem, then they're gonna be able to mitigate it with neighbors. And then the wastewater treatment plant will be ultimately designed to meet the requirements of N P D S permit. Item will manage that and uh make sure that they're not upsetting upsetting the river. So I think that's what we have.
Questions. How come in the lagoon, how come it's not lined?
It can be.
Because it seems like when you're pumping water out of the wells, it's gonna suck from that lagoon, possibly and get that down.
It could, and that would be okay because the water's not, the only thing is it's.
At that point, it's temperature only.
It's only temperature, so in that case, it's it's just returning the water right there at the lagoon. So, you know, it would be different if this was heavily, if this was contaminated water beyond temperature, then you'd wanna line that or treat it before it went to the lagoon.
So the the temperature, uh it it is it cooling and and only.
It is. It just, all it is, it's it's completely a time thing, so it just sits there and equalizes with the with the ground and the atmosphere.
By the time it gets to the lagoon, it's already been treated, right? That's what you're saying.
Yeah, well, with the water that goes to lagoon, it it's it's non-contact cooling, so it never touches anything that really
contaminates.
Changes, it contaminates, I think. So the only thing that you worry about is the temperature, and they don't wanna dump hot water into the river. So you have to go to the lagoon to let the temperature equalize or it goes to the river.
Is it possible for, if you're pumping the wells, for that warm water to be drawn out of that lagoon into the aquifer?
It can go into the aquifer, but by the time it would move through the aquifer, it would be restabilized with the temperature. The temperature wouldn't create a problem.
So it wouldn't create bacteria?
No, no, and aquifers, especially these sand and gravel aquifers, they're natural filters. I mean, that's major advantage of why people use wells and aquifers, because you figure the rainwater's infiltrating in anyways through the soils and picking up all that. But by the time it goes through all the all the sand and gravel, it's filtered out from the middle of the sand and gravel, there's lots of time for um bacteria viruses to die through that process too. It's a pretty slow process.
I got a couple, three or four questions.
Sure.
Since this was thirty-five thousand for a seventeen-page report. Was this put out for bid or how did the redevelopment committee determine you guys were gonna do it?
Mike. I pass that to the realtor.
Real answer, this is a company that uh we've worked with a little bit before. They've done good work for us, and it was short notice. So we went back to the company that we've worked with before, who gave us a discounted price, and we took it. So that's, that was all there was to it.
So thirty-five thousand from seventeen page is a discounted price?
That's correct.
What's a normal price?
Forty-five.
And you didn't put it out for any other companies to bid?
We did not.
And they just did a desktop study according to their report?
I'd have to let them tell you how they did their study.
Yeah, because it it states in the report, it was a desktop study. So I wondered what the difference in that and the full environmental report would be.
I I would have to ask him to uh internationally.
I guess it was just, it was just a desktop study where we're looking at state databases and pulling in information and reading reports and uh that's that's what it takes.
And that's all they've required for thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
Think like we need some doughs down this way. I agree with Dan on the liner part. What's the temperature going into and out of the lagoon? When it hits the river, what's the expected temperature range of the water normally in a situation like this?
Yeah, I believe it's it's coming in eighty degrees into the into the lagoon, and then the river is variable based on the season, right? So and it and it needs to match.
How would they say it's gotta be different to summer and winter?
Yeah, but the cooling's different too because you've got atmospheric.
Are there no cooling towers or anything involved this process?
I don't know if there's part of the process of the plant.
No, okay. And turkeys, when you slaughter them, are a hundred and six degrees body temperature. What you guys normally cool them down to?
Low forty.
At this point, we would ask the gentleman to come to the podium and state his name, and then we can proceed.
Good evening. Ryan Top on Whitewater Processing. Um, the, yeah, so they're a hundred and three, a hundred and six. Um, we're cooling them to forty degrees or less in approximately three or four hours.
Okay, so you use like a geothermal cooling system?
Uh, yeah, that's what this is. So we're pumping groundwater out. It goes through a compressor uh system that is providing the cooling to the chiller, to the water bath chiller that's chilling turkeys.
Okay. Yeah, that's calculated roughly. You're gonna use two hundred and fifty-seven gallons to cool to cool one turkey. As you take one point eight million gallons divided by seven thousand turkeys being slaughtered.
Yeah, it's also running the whole freezer facility, uh blast freezers, uh cold storage for fresh product. It's the the freezer systems, you know, providing also building cooling. Um, there's a lot more to it.
So you guys use a flash freeze?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And the other question I had, what, you know, you're gonna be discharging about eighty thousand, thousand gallons of water per hour, and this is probably for those guys. What effect will this have on the level of water in the White Water River?
It won't have any. None at all? No, we're gonna discharge, was it one point six?
Point six.
Yeah. One point what?
One point six.
That might, would that water?
Otherwise be running from the aquifer into the white, into the river.
Right.
So it's just coming in.
In the same water system, so it's just, you know, we're pulling it out, using it, cleaning it, putting it back.
So are you saying that the aquifer is the same as the river? It's one in the same body?
Yeah, they are hydraulically connected, yes.
Hydraulically connected, but they aren't physically connected, correct? What's the difference?
Yeah, they touch each other.
The the water from the river mangles in with the water in the aquifer? Is that what you're saying?
Well, changes the gradient towards the well from the river, that's what happens. The water comes through.
So you're talking about creating a vacuum to go to the river to the aquifer, correct?
Yeah. Same like gravel pit lakes over down the river, you'll see, uh, you know, in the summer, they go, they drop with the river level. And in the in the winter, they rise. Somewhere here, the two seventy-five interchange, the pond there behind movie theater. Um, it it changes with river level. When the river floods, it's flood stage that backs up through the ground.
What about, will there be any effect on efficient wildlife in the river because of this?
Um, we went through a full eight-step uh uh review with the S D A, environmental review, and D N R was part of that review process. And they reported back that they did not see an impact.
Okay.
Is the, is your little treatment area, is that that's above the flood plain?
Yeah, so so let me, um, I guess I kind of do my whole introduction.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wanted to answer your questions by um, ask more materials and stuff.
You got the same deal like with your other plant?
Uh, it's very similar, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm on the same river and same conditions and in the bottom land there.
Same, he's got a, he's got a new mode of testing.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so good evening. Thanks for, thanks for having me. Um, I'm Ryan Top with Whitewater Processing, uh, trying to get this this project off the ground. So I am a fourth generation business owner. My great grandmother actually started this all in nineteen thirty-two. Um, so it's it's gone through, uh, started in Miami Town area, and then now in our current facility in Harrison was built in the fifties. Um, we've continued to add on and grow, and the facility's aging as well as we just, our business has grown beyond what it can contain. So we started looking for um new locations. Um, we see the site, it's close to home. Um, so we'd like try to try to build and grow here. So the new facility will be sized to double our production. Right now, we can do nine thousand turkeys a day. Um, but we have kind of a batch process that at the end of the day, everything's full. We gotta stop, we're done. Um, so this will be sized similar, except that it will be a continuous process. So we could add shifts as we can pick up demand um or bring on, you know, more turkey growers to grow turkeys. So so that's what we're trying to do. Uh, we operate, um, you know, very similar situation. Uh, there in Harrison now, we we pump our own well waters. We have our own public drinking system um on the certified operator. And then we do our own water treatment, disinfection, and discharge to the White Water River. So it's um very similar, um, or just growing and modernizing.
Do you have somebody on staff that controls that wastewater?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a full-time operator. Uh, we go through, there's daily testing, weekly testing, and monthly testing. Um, the daily stuff we can do ourselves, it's like temperature, pH, uh dissolved oxygen, some simple items. Uh, weekly, a lab comes and pulls samples, uh, because we don't have a lab to complete the B O D, fat oil, grease, uh ammonia, stuff like that.
That's an independent lab, not associated with your organization at all?
Right, yeah.
What will be, so your wastewater or your little uh wastewater treatment, is anybody else? Does that just be for your plant, your plant only, or was anybody else hooked on to that or?
No, it's just for us. So, um, so Brad mentioned the strength of our wastewater is very different than municipal. So like even our Harrison site, we're right next door to the municipal system, but we don't discharge them because their equipment and technology's not designed to treat our type of water. So so we'll have a specialized treatment system that's designed just to treat our water. Um, and so.
You guys used to put waste in there, in there, didn't you?
Uh, no, didn't.
Uh, you you just built a new big thing down there about, oh, you lose time, like five years ago, probably a hundred years ago, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, we didn't. Um, we considered it at the time, but um they had pre-treatment requirements that were gonna cost almost the same investment for us to be able to discharge water to them at a lower um, at a lower loading rate than what we comes right out of the plant. So we ended up building full-scale system, yeah. So, yeah, and that was uh, that was my my project. Um, so I went to engineering school, got an engineering degree right at Skolman. And then uh that was my project, working home, so.
It was interesting.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know I was gonna work in wastewater, but um, yeah, so went through a we sponsored research at the I S T University, Dr. Karen Mansell, worked with her, um, did a lot of live bench scale research on exactly how to set the system up to make it treat our water specifically.
For this particular, the new plant you're talking about?
Oh, no, that's for the existing plant. So, yeah, and then the new plant's gonna use the same basic technology, but some newer, more modern facilities to to do it in. But we're still utilizing the same, the DAF, you know, to remove fat oil and grease and then biological process that breaks down the B O D and T S S and ammonia. Because they're all, I mean, they're all naturally degrading items, you know, sort of with the waste from the turkey to the blood, the fat, I mean, it's naturally, it's natural things. Um, you just don't wanna put it in, you know, high concentrations is is not good, but um, it's all things that naturally break down. So it's all biological processes and uh.
So at your other plant, what do you use to disin- for disinfection? Do you use the U V or?
U V.
Someone told me that's the best thing to use.
Yeah, so we use U V. That's um currently, there's a push for uh peroxide. So basically, you just inject peroxide. Um, it kills the bacteria and then gases bubbles off. You know, if you put peroxide on it, it bubbles off. Um, so there is kind of a, that's kind of the hot, hot button item. Um, so we're gonna evaluate that, but um, U V would likely be the choice.
So is your employee waste gonna go through the same plant as your turkey?
Yeah, so it'll also be plum separate. So the the break area, restrooms, everything is all plum separate. It'll get to a septic tank for solids removal, and then the gray water off the septic tank would be combined um to in the treatment system and treat and treat it the same. And uh basically, the state allows that because it's the same, we're looking at the same contaminants. So we're looking at B O D, T S S, and ammonia and U V disinfection. So we're looking at the same items, so so we're able to treat them together rather than have two separate treatment systems.
This is quite a silly question, but in that traffic, that seemed like the wells were a lot closer to the river. And I see they're up by the street, I'm not in your, I mean, in the thing he showed, it looked like the well was closer to the river.
So I think that was just kind of for illustration.
Okay.
Um.
I didn't know, I didn't know if that's probably some sort of strategy to where you put the wells.
Um, there's setback distances from buildings, um, setback distances from each other. Um, you know, there there's, it's it's done with purpose, yes. Um, but we also wanna keep them out of the flood areas to keep them up.
So they're all in that front parcel?
Yes.
But that's in the five hundred year flood plain.
Uh, it won't be on, more completed. Yeah, there's there's a, portions of it, I don't know about flood. I know the hundred year mark, there's portions of the site are already above the hundred year mark. But once we complete the building pad and build up from there, are, we're actually above the five hundred year mark. Yeah, because I was saying. Uh, all right, they're, part of their property is in the, in flood plain, yeah, five hundred year. Yeah.
Well, I think uh most of us up here, the only concern we had was the uh, the the product, you know, getting back into the river. And it seems like if you're testing weekly and monthly and all of that, I mean, that kind of.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I mean, we work with Ohio E P A now, and we work with Item somewhere on our farms where we grow with manure permits and stuff like that. Um, and they both operate very similarly. Um, so I I don't expect any issues. Um, we'll get them and stick with their plan and and what they're gonna require of us, it's gonna be be very similar.
Ryan, I know there's not a lot of residents or any residents really around here, uh, but just out of curiosity, what about the smell?
Yeah, um, so it's part of, part of that site is that the prevailing wind direction uh below our site downwind is is all not just in the flood plain, but in the floodway. So the the chance of being development there is very low, very low. So.
So you're saying it still stinks a little?
Well, I mean, yeah, uh, it's livestock. I mean, we're bringing live livestock. Um, um, there's odors that exist. Um. You know, there there's kind of a stigma and the past history, you know, nineties and and earlier where there were some other issues. Uh, it was due to old technology and and also we're right next to the city wastewater plant too. And so there was some shared uh, shared responsibility.
Some of us are used to it.
Yeah, so we had to go over to the Tanner's Creek Bridge, yeah. But uh, but no, the the new facility, uh, part of it is there's things we keep outside now that won't be outside, that we can keep inside. Uh, we've grown and kind of taken things outside and built outbuildings and separated them at our current facility that that now we'll be able to properly build, you know, inside the building. Um, so like I had some questions over like the feathers and the heads and the feet. Um, you know, those are all sale items. They get our rendering company that cooks them down and makes uh fertilizer or animal byproducts or um.
So that's true.
But it's in, the truck is inside the building. Through the process, there's an order that's continuously loading the truck during the day, during the shift. Uh, once the shift's over, they tarp the trailer, hook up to it, and it goes down the road.
There was some confusion here at the last meeting about where all the parts went to and and you're.
Yeah.
But there's a market for that.
It's actually, yeah, we actually get paid. Sometimes it 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 just covers the trucking to to get rid of it, but that's still favorable situation for sure. Um, we don't have to landfill or 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 deal with it another way, and and it creates a a positive impact. It creates another product to be used in a different industry.
Ryan, I really appreciate all the time you spent explaining and and helping to put us at ease with some questions, but Ryan, I really appreciate all the time he spent explaining and, and helping to put us at ease with some questions, but. We are also the fiscal body, right, so from the fiscal standpoint, um. Impact as far as jobs, job creation and, and the, the tax base that's created here. Certainly. From the fiscal perspective is a great win for Dearborn County. And, uh, these, these jobs are, how many of these? Are these all new jobs, or do you see some of these being job transfers from the Harrison plant to Dearborn County?
I believe, um. I'd have to guess probably seventy-five percent transplant. Um, I know there's some people who, who may not. You know, transfer with us, and I do, and I know I'm gonna need to hire more. Uh, some of the actual higher level jobs, mechanics, drivers, um, because the new facility will have some more technology that right now. Um, I've got like one guy that can fix, that I'm gonna need three. Um, so, so there will be some addition, um, just right out the, out the gate of those jobs and then. As, um, we get the facility up and running and we can ramp up production, I, I know I have customers and I have suppliers. Um, out there willing. Um, so in the five years of operation, if we can ramp up, we would be running extra shifts. An extra hours and that would be additional jobs, new jobs.
Of the, excluding the, uh, executive positions there. It says average salary twenty-seven dollars an hour, what, what is the range?
So drivers are starting twenty-five, mechanics are like thirty and up, um. There are number of kind of middle, like area managers, floor managers that range sixteen to twenty-five. Um. So it's in that range.
What about like the people doing?
Like, starting in, we're starting in at ten. Or, well, it's above minimum wage, so it's, it's like eleven now. But then they get two dollar raise in sixty days. And then we have a kind of an odd structure where we do weekly bonuses. Uh, so instead of having an attendance program where people miss days and they get fired or they get in trouble. We, we use the carrot method, so it's a hundred eighty bucks a week if you just hit your days at your schedule and you show up on time. So that on like, so the one department that works thirty-two to thirty-five hours a week, that's like six bucks an hour. You know, so they're coming in with a base rate of ten and then that bonus each week makes like sixteen.
Sounds like a pretty good idea.
It actually, it actually. It, it actually works pretty well, um. Um, it's, it teaches, you know, some younger people, um, responsibility and what's important, getting people to show up on time and. And be, uh, reliable and. Um, so that's a lot of our, all of our incoming jobs are, um, you know, guys still in high school or right out of high school. Um, so.
Spigs volumes that you've been in business for four generations. I mean, it says a lot about your family.
Yeah, we've been, we've been very fortunate, uh. The previous generations are extremely hard workers, um.
The fact that you went to Rose Home, I mean, that's, that's, that's part of it, how do you?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that that was, uh, favorable when it happened, but I think it's appreciated now.
Absolutely.
So I think I've heard you mention. I D M, D N R, U S D A is, is part of this program as well, as part of operation, but multiple agencies also helping keep an eye on. Facility and, and your procedures and policies.
Yes, we have three U S D A inspectors on site every day, so we have a line inspector that's looking at every turkey. Um, as soon as you open it up, they're, they're inspecting to make sure. You see, you know, you see issues in the liver or inside the body cavity, nothing, definitely throw it away or maybe trim something off. Um, and then there's an inspector that walks around, looks at just G M Ps, good manufacturing processes, so hairnets. Um, smocks, hand washing, um, you know, drop a knife, you can't pick it up, you've gotta. Sanitize and stuff like that, and then there's a vet who's on site, who's looking at the birds coming in. So, and. His job's been especially busy lately with the A I bird flu stuff, um. So he's had a very, much more active role.
Those are all U S D A employees.
Those are all U S D A, yes. Yes.
Great.
So my main concern basically includes. Is with the groundwater contamination. Because we've got a mess down here on western side of the county. With the flyish pits from I N M from years ago. And that affects Aurora Hillsborough. And O L M S district, so. I feel like this is. Mark and Tim and Liz's. Battle here, so I'm just gonna abstain. I'm not gonna let it go.
Okay.
You guys decide your future, I'm not gonna.
Think the technology from what the.
Well, I think cops will run it, I've known cops for a few years since I started teaching. Seven in nineteen seventy. You know, so.
I don't wanna remember those guys.
Well, I remember, you know, they were all good guys, you know, and I know the cops will do what's right. And do the job right, I don't have an issue with you guys, I just don't wanna get. Into another environmental mess like we have over in this part of the county.
Yeah, so why not vote no against it then, that, that's how you feel? You just wanna be able to point the finger at everybody on this board.
Saying because I don't feel like it's my decision, it's yours.
I, I, I always say I'm, I'm not gonna have anything on my site that's anywhere near nasty as flying.
What are you guys gonna do with the sludge?
The sludge goes to landfill.
Okay, so you don't spread it on crop fields or anything?
No, it has, uh, it's, everything's gener, uh, grass approved, but we still don't use it, we choose to get a Bavarian Kentucky landfill.
But that's pretty expensive to get rid of too.
Thirty dollars a ton, yeah. But fortunately, our, our process is pretty efficient, doesn't make a lot of sludge, and then we dewater it and dry it and it. It, it remains cost-effective to do it that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Cop?
No.
Appreciate your information.
Thank you.
Hopefully you'll stick around in case anything else comes up, but, uh, the next, uh. Movement on this process would be to adopt twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three, the confirmatory resolution of the Dearborn County. Council confirming designation of a certain area within. With the mortar drive economic invalidization area. So we discussed this at our January meeting and approved that part of the process. This is, I guess, the second part of the same process, so Mr. Smart, I guess you've got the, the document?
I do.
Okay. So we simply need a motion to adopt this resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this, uh, confirmatory resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay?
No.
Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Motion passes. Uh, was your act first, so if you want to time and sign them, or you want us to go to the next one?
You go to the next.
Okay, the next one is twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four. It's a resolution approving the statement of benefits for real property tax abatements, and that information's been provided to us, it's a ten-year. Starting at a hundred percent, going down to zero percent. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay?
Are you abstaining on that too, Brian?
Yep.
I have a question for Mr. Smart.
Is there?
Uh, can councilman Wright legally abstain from voting on these issues?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. So next on our agenda is the auditor, so we will wait for that until we sign the resolutions that was referred on. Yeah, we'd ask Mr. Co, or say Mr. Cop and the rest of the individuals from the redevelopment commission and the consultants to. Uh, thank you for your information and for participation in our meeting tonight, welcome to Dearborn County, Mr. Cop, we look forward to doing business a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is simply paperwork you're freely. And then on the way side.
And they're signing, right?
Oh, that's why we're here.
I know.
That's why I didn't look.
But it's simply just sort of information.
Yeah, me too.
Here you go, Danny.
I'll eat my candy if you put them all away.
You're voting too.
Tony knows I'll take care of us.
You voted for the confirmatory resolution, you're the one to see a big.
Right. I mean, it is like. Yes, it's not very popular, but it is.
I first air plugs.
She said it's at home.
Oh, it's Tim?
I'm doing that on purpose.
She could get your pandemic as a butcher.
Oh, I'll get a straight one today. I enjoy that. I didn't realize I did, but you pointed it out.
So it was a while, and I thought Bernie was speaking, um, and dress the board.
Where'd he go, all kinds?
Oh, yeah?
I knew she got it. I believe all.
So that's the next one, just do not report it, everyone has to say that you've.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So the next item on our agenda. I'd like for us to resume our meeting, the next item on our agenda is that the auditor has provided us with the TIF. Report and it's just a matter of us having the information, there's no action required. Oh, that's okay, that's okay, but, uh, it's anyway, the information has been provided for you as required by law, so we do have that information, we're acknowledging that tonight. Is that all you need on that?
Yeah.
It, this is for all tips?
Right. That's all, all the tips in the account.
Happened last year, all your members, all your disbursements, the proceedings, I mean. And you have, I have to. Push that into the gate, or make a tally of those anyway, I submit it. Each year.
The Aurora ones also?
I don't do those, I just do cameras.
Well. I meant the one out there, I say Aurora, but it's in the. Yeah.
He's talking about the one on the floor.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant.
So next on our agenda is the salary ordinance. And that's something we'll need, there's gonna be several papers to sign tonight, so please nobody leave.
And that, this is just housekeeping and.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the salary ordinance?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Danny done it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion passes, no, it's gonna require signatures, do you want us to wait? Are you gonna do that?
We'll operate them all while.
Okay. The next is an amendment to the annual local with Ohio County for five thousand dollars. We just need a motion to approve it, Conny, it's an additional five thousand toward the courts. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the additional five thousand dollars received from Ohio County to Dearborn County for circuit courts?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion passes. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two, it's a resolution of transferring riverboat revenue, uh, revenue funds. And it shows how council at our August meeting. Uh, approved the disbursement of the riverboat funds and which categories that money goes into. And this is another item that requires signatures.
Did we vote on that?
We did it during budget.
I've come up signing.
The reason we're doing this one is because state board of accounts. Wanted us to leave it in one fund and we're doing this so we can move it to different funds and use it, it's easier for our bookkeeping or Leah's bookkeeping.
So didn't we put on this person?
Not, not.
Yeah, we, we agreed on this during budget.
Yeah. But this is the first time we've had to sign something on it.
Right.
Well, it's just the way we move the money.
It's for state board of accounts purposes more than anything else. So is there a, um, motion to approve this resolution?
We move.
Thank you, Dennis, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion passes. Uh, minutes were emailed, everyone, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our January meeting?
We move.
Thank you, Dennis, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Danny.
Danny.
Motion passes. Do you have any other business, Conny?
No, no.
Okay. Dennis, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion, we agree.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second, Tim? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned, please stay until all of the documents are signed.
Go to East Central.
So my cousin, she's a teacher.
You guys can stay for the meetings and people.
Let him start with him and all.
Yeah, you did not name any.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it was him that said.
They got it one way or the other, it's when they're working somewhere else and they live.
And there's nothing.
They, they said that.